All right. Since this is record, has she gotten here yet? Um, it's coming. She comes. You just had to say it.
Alright, call over finance committee. First item up, discussion started this year regarding those findings.
Yes. I wanted to bring the phone for discussion because as we know, there was been the control of our reports regarding the errors and potential abuses in the STAR program. So, I have to ask the assessment to come today to see if that is something that we can address or are addressing, or if it's affecting us in any way. Since apparently throughout the different places that municipalities that they audited, there were some abuses in the error. So, you're gonna pick someone up and just talk about what's going on in the community?
Thank you for the opportunity. The order that we had reworked one of the 46 municipalities in which was audited last year. What they did was we actually pulled whatever applications, no. They just pulled them randomly and we had to sit down with them and explain a few things after they had reviewed our analysis of what happened, what we're doing. And so, I went into the extent of stating that we didn't do a project which we did the seniors, senior exemptions and the veterans exemptions. We sent a cover letter out and it was really received very well. A lot of people were apprehensive about it, but the veterans were great. They don't normally have to renew annually. So, we did find a few things in that area and so did the senior exemptions. There was talk as to what I started as to the process of the ID and certain things that I asked that they have to submit along with their applications. It was a little hairy at times, but on most part, the public was generally saying, "Thank you, let's do it." And that's what we did so far.
Were there any concerns with regarding the audit that we had? Everything was fine?
They found a few things, but I think that we kind of just explained to them, "This is what we're doing. This is what we're going to do in the fall, which we had." We explained to them about the veterans update and seniors and they were really glad to hear that at the point. They reinforced what I was doing. They reinforced what I was asking for. But then again, if we're asking for certain things and they're submitting that by our guidelines, but you know, I mean, we're not police either. I do personally have contacts with other states, so I can call them. So, we found a few of those and we're just going along with anything that seems to be followed up by corporation counsel. We are extending that up to them to do what they're part of it.
Okay. Are there any questions?
A lot more should be done now.
Okay. What types of things?
Well, I think that I only did the seniors and the veterans. There's other assumptions out there. We were gonna start doing it last fall, but I put a stop to that process for the time being. So, now it would be up to the administration and whoever's gonna be taking my position.
Do you, trying to think more in the data perspective, you go through and you do an audit of a large quantity of records and of course, that's the purpose of the audit, to find errors or things like that. Could we extrapolate kind of a trend in terms of remember if they can be bound to say, "Hey, this is, you know, a bigger issue that really needs to be affected," or is it a few small findings that we say, "Okay, it's kind of this one?"
It's a big issue, but it's also very difficult to see every cleanup, what we did because of the way that we put them in, that we did do it with like a term year and an initial year. And then you have the ones that are coming in brand new, which we get the same. I'm kind of limited with the database that I have, so the new ones were coming in, you know, which we checked. And they would have the first, you know, the same initial year, so it was really hard to differentiate. But by looking at them, there's issues. And it should be considered, that's my recommendation.
Nick Ben, our witness.
Thank you. So, which I have before you is a legislative request relative to the board's assessment review. That board currently consists of five members, three of which are active. After composing this and sending it out, I heard from our legal staff that we actually can have more than just two temporary members. You can go up to double your existing staff on the board. So, just a little question, this you can go up to five temporary members. However, the intent is to make the assessment review process as efficient as possible in the coming period and it is recommended that we do continue the board of five as is funded in the budget. But what we do is, as allowed by law, is we have the chairman of the board appoint two panels. One panel can have two and the other panel can have three members. And then you have two panels that can review all of the items from the citizens that come in and then after they each respect the panel appears, the citizens, they can, they will reconvene as a panel and the five members will make a determination of what has been received during the process. So, basically what this is asking for or recommending is that we continue with the five members board and then three of which are active, so there'd have to be two appointments made by the council.
So, will we go with the two appointments plus the temporary?
No, actually, you could go with a board of five. So, you've got three active now. You would have to name two into the existing slots on the board. And then once the board convened, the chair would have to set up those two panels and the panels can be unequal because they are just hearing what the citizens bring in, citizens leave, and then you've got the ability for the board to convene and make a determination on each of the grievances that have come in. So, what that does is it'll give you, give the city the ability to handle people more quickly, but it still then keeps us within budget in that we've got only a panel of five that we're staffing to make this determination.
So, just so I understand, so I'm happy with my assessment. I commend you greatest, right? I could sit as part of two people?
Right.
Or three people, depending on what, why I get in, the chances. I present my case to them and then I go home and wait, right? And then...
Which will you do?
Right, right, what we do now. So, those two people will then go to the full board of five and have their meeting and they'll say, "These are the notes I took when we were talking to Carl Erickson. This is what he thinks."
Their take, their, I guess, splitting it up. Right, it's sort of they're doing the fact finding for the board and then coming in and with their expertise of presenting what was, what was shown to them when the citizen was in. And then it's the board, as always, five members, that make the determination as to what to do with that.
My own concern is if I felt that I'd gee, I got the two people versus the three people and I can have less chances of a fair response, you know? You know, if I'm feeling like making a passionate complaint or whatever, you know, whatever I'm trying to come across to the people that are listening to my case, you, I'd want to be able to pitch to at least the majority of the board, not the minority of the board, you know what I'm saying?
Well, this recommendation is made from the perspective of trying to make a whole process more efficient and the citizen will still receive the full attention of the board in that the board as a whole will need and review each and every case brought before it. What this does is allows each of the representatives to use their expertise to receive the grievance from, from the taxpayer and carry forward that information. So, it's, it's ministerial nature in that you're allowing the board to be split up into two panels to accept information, but the board still functions as a whole to make the determination. But certainly that's at the comfort level of what the council feels should happen.
We can't tell by the documents that I have access to who's active right now and who's being suggested for appointment of the five?
I can, I'll drop this, tell you who's active. I believe our active members are Gregory Hoffman, Ruth Bergeron, and William Sanderson. We have had a resignation from Ernest Frido and the term of Ms. Mary Pritchard has expired.
Okay, so the five resumes are proposed for appointment?
Basically, what you have with the resumes, these are people who are dedicated and have just been serving on a board.
Okay.
Chalk has been trying to reach out to them to find out if they would be interested in particular and this particular board has not had a lot connecting with people yet. So, I think this is something that if we can get this together this week, I'll put it on for unanimous consent on Monday night. If not, we'll just have to delay. The issue with delaying is there's required training that they have to go through, but it's at the end of April, so we'll, so in terms of the names that you have, I mean, if you have other names you want to suggest or if you have concerns about any of the names you have, let me know that and then we'll try to get it resolved.
I just have one concern. I know they came up with the police review board that in the bylaws with police review board, it said there would be no spouses on the same board. So, I did notice that there's, there are two people that are married that are both interested in boards, so possibly having them on different boards. I know that that might not be written into those particular bylaws, but we talked about looking at that going forward. We're calling that for whatever boards, we should call it for all of our boards, to make it consistent and fair, right? So, that's the other thing, maybe those two people that serve on different boards.
Yeah, I have a question regarding, actually to Mr. Erickson's point regarding the five members and then a board of three versus a board of two. You said there's an opportunity for us to go up to five temporary people?
It's actually just a clear, like, it's, your board stays at five.
The number stays at five.
You have two intake panels, for lack of a better term. Now, would consist of two people and one can consist of three.
You were having a feeling of a spare, right?
Yeah. You certainly could, it is, you couldn't appoint temporary members without a doubt.
That would create then the board of three. And actually, I was thinking about two more people because that, if, let's say we could use two more temporary, two other temporary individuals, then you can have two boards of three and that third, that other individual, the odd person, would not stand either board when the board came together. So, then they haven't heard either one, but they're hearing the input from both, are you following?
I think I am and I have a defer to council to speak up here, but I think there's, there's the issue of you continue with a board of five and do this two-panel intake, or I think what you're possibly talking about is having two distinct separate panels, or boards, excuse me, two distinct boards?
No, the two distinct panels.
You just want to have two panels of the same number of staff. We could certainly do that. That would be a change outside of what has been budgeted for and the, oddly enough, the budget allowed for a temporary member is much lower than what you would normally compensate with someone. So, I, I'm not sure if we have any leeway legaling on that, Mr. Foster, or...
I think it's here.
You think it'd be problematic to attract someone?
Yeah. I remember, right, it was like $60 or something?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty. I know it was minimal. You can't get anybody at that. It's close, you could increase it, but you can't take action at the council.
So, there are options where you consider it as far as definite. What I intended to do here is just lay out where we were, where we are right now, what we can do, whether we go with a two-panel intake or if we wanted to choose an additional number.
Hundred and fifty dollars per, per member?
Per temporary.
Per unit or per...
The new, the total?
Total, okay. Down at the bottom, I saw thirty-one hundred dollars, like that was...
That's your permanent board member and that's what, the permanent board is staffed and compensated as it's shown in the evaluation and the analysis?
Okay.
I'm sorry, sorry. Point for the chair, thirty, thirty-four hundred dollars and then each board member's thirty-one fifty. And that's to be done.
That's at least five days to run off those...
Just, just to comment, you know, with regard to the ex-person, the only thing you want to think about too is having that add member of a board members, which means voting, things like that. And the other thing is, you know, we really need to look at this in that way, that, thank you for your presentation on this, because to be able to review and really just fact find and you're going through a list, okay, you have your comps, you have this, you have that, but two people or three people, they're not making a decision, they are coming back together, they're really just making sure that that individual has all the paperwork and documentation that they need in order to file or reconsider anything. So, that's just another thought in that, in that manner. And it would free the process up a lot quicker. And I also think it might make it more attractive to individuals who do want to serve on the board because sometimes they tend to get money drawn out just trying to get five people together to review this, to make sure. Something to give an idea of what's happening.
Once you get your, they still want to have an alternate, just because somebody's sick.
Yeah, we don't have before though.
Wasn't there a case where somebody was served last year? Somebody was not a good servant?
I guess the main first issues that have been resolved is, I think this is, I guess a bit of a communication.
Did we have five people served last year?
Yes.
I mean, if, if someone would be sick or pass away or whatever happened, then with the point somebody knew before they get your cases, right, I mean, is it something that can be done quickly or the issue is the training?
The issue is the training.
So, for a hundred and fifty dollars, the ultimate number, they go to training and they wouldn't really do anything unless...
They're needed.
They're needed, right?
But then they also could be on the list the next time we have a vacancy.
Right, they're in the training, so if someone calls them the day of, voila, they're there, but you know, and all that, they're, they're needed, right? Is that...
How long is a training session for you?
I don't know, I'm sure, I think it's just a day.
So, any thoughts as having, you know, one spare?
Are we looking for?
Hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah, just saying, just asking, Mr. Finance, just asking.
From my perspective, I mean, I think in terms of, this is an important part of the process in terms of people having the ability to agree their assessments. And the last thing we want is to have that process go awry, a hundred and fifty dollars if anyone wants to act towards it. And if it was three thousand, well, you know, at some point, everyone's gonna have their trade off, it's valuable, but I think having a backup person would be helpful.
This could be the first year we would have that, as far as I know. I can only speak to, I know as far as five, you know, I don't have the strength to...
So, I don't have any responsibility on that.
There's a must be training for the time we have and that, you know, so we end it all off.
True, simple, that's sort of how.
Okay.
So, again, if you have any ideas and names, get them to me and we'll resume if possible and otherwise, we'll try to reach out to people on this issue.
So, possibly deal with it Monday night or if not, next week.
So, right now, you wanna, we're gonna make a change, I guess, we're gonna say that we're gonna have one alternate. It seems like everyone, for the majority of people, we're gonna pass it tonight?
Do we need motivation to do that?
Ask for two temporary ones?
Yeah.
So, I mean...
So, we'd need three names, right? We have three people there, you need two permanents and one alternate. And that list is out there, it just comes down to getting all the data by this month and so we'll pass it, is what you're asking to do?
If, if, if we can reach out to these people, find out if they have an interest or are serving on this particular board and then we can put this together by Monday night and we'll just try to do it with unanimous consent. And if I can't, we'll just give it one more week.
One more cycle, okay.
There's, I know some of the people have day jobs, I know that they have problems solving it.
Some of it's careless.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Okay, is there a motion?
Well, we're not gonna, I'll do it unanimous consent.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
He's up again.
Budget reappraisal, water treatment plant staff and golf course staff.
Exactly. So, in the city's water department, there is a vacancy. It is a water treatment plant trainee. And this was advertised and one of the applicants who has been selected to fill this position is actually an employee of our sewer department. He has the necessary credentials to be a water treatment plant operator, seventeen A, not the trainee. And management would like to appoint this person as a seventeen A operator, a full operator rather than a trainee because it's beneficial to the city to, to have both, to have an operator in that line. The plan would have, was always to, what we're planning for here is some succession in the department that's gonna be occurring and the trainee line, the plan was to hire someone, they would come on and move in, get their certification and then become a seventeen A in the following year budget. So, we've got that opportunity right now with someone in-house that we'd like to move with. The existing budget for the trainee line is sufficient to support the rest of the year's cost if we were to hire this individual as a water treatment plant operator seventeen A, so it's budget neutral in this year. The second part of this request is relative to the ball fund wherein we have hired a ball professional at a rate of salary, base salary that is lower than what was budgeted and that difference we are going to use to hire a, an assistant ball professional at the base rate that was noted in here. And again, there is no, this is budget neutral as outlined in the evaluation and analysis.
Does the part-time person get help with this? Nope.
Seasonal.
Alright, so both of you are...
Yes, they are.
I think some of them, any questions, comments, concerns?
I'll answer one. The person I understand is vacating from the sewer loan to water, so what happens to the vacant position? That the vacancy that the department would be willing to fill?
Well, I think you're saying that that would be eliminated.
No.
Because you're, you're appropriating the funds.
No, there is no, there's no change of revenue. What we've got is a department, a sewer department employee who was one of the people that applied for the opening in the water department.
Water.
So, they are going to, that individual who's selected will be filling the water department line and a vacancy in there. And they, by doing that, creating a vacancy in the sewer department.
Right.
So, what I was referring to is within the water department budget itself, with the trainee vacancy, even though that's at a lower rate than we would like to hire this person, that has been vacant since the beginning of the year. So, we've got the initial savings that we need to hire at a little higher...
Okay, so, so we've got the first quarter savings to take for his full salary for the rest of the year, but it would require an adjustment next year to accommodate this whole thing.
Exactly. Which we really were planning for actually anyway, because we were gonna hire as a trainee, get that person certified and then it would be easier.
Okay, so really this is just to say, can we take the full year and use it to condense it up to three or four?
The budget says a trainee who's got the certification, but the budget limits, so it's an operator.
So, is the trainee position being eliminated?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's being eliminated.
It's not a vacant. It's now gonna be the operator seventeen A.
Normally, that position would be a trainee for one year.
Right.
I just want to make sure we're adding an operator and adding a light trainee.
No, there's no additional FTEs in this process, it's just taking advantage of someone who's already here.
Any, any questions?
And we'll advertise a sewer position, excuse me? We'll be advertising that position as from the opening of Thor now.
Yes.
Yes. I will move it on second.
All of you there?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. And the next one up, here between the City of Kentucky and local 378.
Phil's parole is informing that Wednesday, 37 approved the contract, I'm wondering what's going on with last time, and now we're back to the process of order for...
Any questions on this, on the negotiation? Any discussions out of, I won't see that thing?
I'll move it.
Any questions about your group? Can I move?
Second it?
I'll move it.
I...
Great.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Next three are in session session.
Okay.
And so, uh...
Someone goes down to claims?
Yeah, we have a fight to have, and I'm here, we're done, so, we're in recess.
When is recess?
All of you are in recess.
Aye.
We're in recess.
I'll move it.
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 You certainly could, it is, you couldn't appoint temporary members without a doubt.
That would create then the board of three. And actually, I was thinking about two more people because that, if, let's say we could use two more temporary, two other temporary individuals, then you can have two boards of three and that third, that other individual, the odd person, would not stand either board when the board came together. So, then they haven't heard either one, but they're hearing the input from both, are you following?
I think I am and I have a defer to council to speak up here, but I think there's, there's the issue of you continue with a board of five and do this two-panel intake, or I think what you're possibly talking about is having two distinct separate panels, or boards, excuse me, two distinct boards?
No, the two distinct panels.
You just want to have two panels of the same number of staff. We could certainly do that. That would be a change outside of what has been budgeted for and the, oddly enough, the budget allowed for a temporary member is, is much lower than what you would normally compensate someone. So, I, I'm not sure if we have any leeway legaling on that, Mr. Foster, or...
I think it's here.
You think it'd be problematic to attract someone?
Yeah. I remember, right, it was like sixty dollars or something?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty. I know it was minimal. You can't get anybody at that. It's close, you could increase it, but you can't take action at the council.
So, there are options where you consider it as far as definite. What I intended to do here is just lay out where we were, where we are right now, what we can do, whether we go with a two-panel intake or if we wanted to choose an additional number.
Hundred and fifty dollars per, per member?
Per temporary.
Per unit or per...
The new, the total?
Total, okay. Down at the bottom, I saw thirty-one hundred dollars, like that was...
That's your permanent board member and that's what, the permanent board is staffed and compensated as it's shown in the evaluation and the analysis?
Okay.
Yeah.
Three thousand.
I'm sorry, sorry. Point for the chair, thirty, forty-four hundred dollars and then each board member's thirty-one fifty. And that's to be done.
That's at least five days to run off those...
Yes.
Just, just to comment, you know, with regard to the ex-person, the only thing you want
to think about too is having that add member of a board members, which means voting, things like that. And the other thing is, you know, we really need to look at this in that way, that, thank you for your presentation on this, because to be able to review and really just fact find and you're going through a list, okay, you have your comps, you have this, you have that, but two people or three people, they're not making a decision, they are coming back together, they're really just making sure that that individual has all the paperwork and documentation that they need in order to file or reconsider anything. So, that's just another thought in that, in that manner. And it would free the process up a lot quicker. And I also think it might make it more attractive to individuals who do want to serve on the board because sometimes they tend to get money drawn out just trying to get five people together to review this, to make sure. Something to give an idea of what's happening.
Once you get your, they still want to have an alternate, just because somebody's sick.
Yeah, we don't have before though.
Wasn't there a case where somebody was served last year? Somebody was not a good servant?
I guess the main first issues that have been resolved is, I think this is, I guess a bit of a communication.
Did we have five people served last year?
Yes.
I mean, if, if someone would be sick or pass away or whatever happened, then with the point somebody knew before they get your cases, right, I mean, is it something that can be done quickly or the issue is the training?
The issue is the training.
Or if they call and pick that day or...
The issue is the training.
The issue is the training. So, for a hundred and fifty dollars, the ultimate number, they go to training and they wouldn't really do anything unless...
They're needed.
They're needed, right?
But then they also could be on the list the next time we have a vacancy.
Right, they're in the training, so if someone calls them the day of, voila, they're there, but you know, and all that, they're, they're needed, right?
How long is a training session for you?
I don't know, I'm sure, I think it's just a day.
So, any thoughts as having, you know, one spare?
Are we looking for?
Hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah, just saying, just asking, Mr. Finance, just asking.
From my perspective, I mean, I think in terms of, this is an important part of the process in terms of people having the ability to agree their assessments. And the last thing we want is to have that process go awry, a hundred and fifty dollars if anyone wants to act towards it. And if it was three thousand, well, you know, at some point, everyone's gonna have their trade off, it's valuable, but I think having a backup person would be helpful.
This could be the first year we would have that, as far as I know.
I can only speak to, I know as far as five, you know, I don't have the strength to...
So, I don't have any responsibility on that.
There's a must be training for the time we have and that, you know, so we end it all off.
True, simple, that's sort of how.
Okay. So, again, if you have any ideas and names, get them to me and we'll resume if possible and otherwise, we'll try to reach out to people on this issue. So, possibly deal with it Monday night or if not, next week.
So, right now, you wanna, we're gonna make a change, I guess, we're gonna say that we're gonna have one alternate. It seems like everyone, for the majority of people, is positioning, we're gonna pass it tonight?
Do we need motivation to do that?
Ask for two temporary ones?
Yeah.
As it is.
So, we'd need three names, right? We have three people there, you need two permanents and one alternate. And that list is out there, it just comes down to getting all the data by this month and so we'll pass it, is what you're asking to do?
If, if, if we can reach out to these people, find out if they have an interest or are serving on this particular board and then we can put this together by Monday night and we'll just try to do it with unanimous consent. And if I can't, we'll just give it one more week.
One more cycle, okay.
There's, I know some of the people have day jobs, I know that they have a problem solving it.
Some of it's careless.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Okay, is there a motion?
Well, we're not gonna, I'll do it unanimous consent.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
He's up again.
Okay, we'll have budget reappraisal, water treatment plant staff and golf course staff.
Exactly. So, in the city's water department, there is a vacancy. It is a water treatment plant trainee. And this was advertised and one of the applicants who has been selected to fill this position is actually an employee of our sewer department. He has the necessary credentials to be a water treatment plant operator, seventeen A, not the trainee. And management would like to appoint this person as a seventeen A operator, a full operator rather than a trainee because it's beneficial to the city to, to have both, to have an operator in that line. The plan would have, was always to, what we're planning for here is some succession in the department that's gonna be occurring and the trainee line, the plan was to hire someone, they would come on and move in, get their certification and then become a seventeen A in the following year budget. So, we've got that opportunity right now with someone in-house that we'd like to move with. The existing budget for the trainee line is sufficient to support the rest of the year's cost if we were to hire this individual as a water treatment plant operator seventeen A, so it's budget neutral in, in this year. The second part of this request is relative to the ball fund wherein we have hired a ball professional at a rate of salary, base salary that is lower than what was budgeted and that difference we are going to use to hire a, an assistant ball professional at the base rate that was noted in here. And again, there is no, this is budget neutral as outlined in the evaluation and analysis.
Does the part-time person get help with this? Nope.
Seasonal.
Alright, so both of you are...
Yes, they are.
I think some of them, any questions? Any questions, comments, concerns?
I'll answer one. The person I understand is vacating from the sewer loan to water, so what happens to the vacant position? That the vacancy that the department would be willing to fill?
Well, I think you're saying that that would be eliminated.
No.
Because you're, you're appropriating the funds.
No, there is no, there's no change of revenue. What we've got is a department, a sewer department employee who was one of the people that applied for the opening in the water department.
Water.
So, they are going to, that individual who's selected will be filling the water department line and a vacancy in there. And they, by doing that, creating a vacancy in the, in the sewer department.
Right.
So, what I was referring to is within the water department budget itself, with the trainee vacancy, even though that's at a lower rate than we would like to hire this person, that has been vacant since the beginning of the year. And so, we've got the initial savings that we need to hire at a little higher...
Okay, so, so we've got the first quarter savings to take for his full salary for the rest of the year, but it would require an adjustment next year to accommodate this whole thing.
Exactly. Which we really were planning for actually anyway, because we were gonna hire as a trainee, get that person certified and then it would be easier.
Okay, so really this is just to say, can we take the full year and use it to condense it up to three or four?
The budget says a trainee who's got the certification, but the budget limits, so it's an operator.
The main first issues that they've been resolved is I think this is a communication.
Could we not find people so that was?
Yes, yes.
I mean, if, if someone would be sick or pass away or whatever happened, then with the point somebody knew before they get your cases, right? I mean, is it something that can be done quickly or?
Issues to train.
Or if they call and pick that day?
Yes, issues to train.
Issues to train.
So for a hundred fifty dollars, the ultimate number, they go to training and they wouldn't really do anything unless.
They're needed.
They're needed, right?
Right.
But then they also could be on the list the next time we have a vacancy.
Right, they're in the training, so if someone calls them the day of, voila, they're there. But now, now they're, they're needed, right?
How long is a training session for you?
I don't know, I'm sure, I think it's just a day.
So any thoughts as having, you know, one spare?
Are we looking for?
Hundred fifty dollars?
Yeah, just saying, just asking, Mr. Finance, just asking.
From my perspective, I mean, I think in terms of training, this is an important part of the process in terms of people having the ability to agree their assessments. And the last thing we want is to have that process go awry because a hundred fifty dollars, if anyone wants to back, or something like that. If it was three thousand, well, you know, at some point everyone's going to have their, their trade off, which is valuable, but I think having back a person would be helpful.
This could be the first year we would have that. As far as I know. I can only speak to, I know unless it was five, you know, I don't have the street.
So, I don't have any more responsibility on that.
There's a must be training for the time we have, you know, so we end up.
True, so that's sort of.
Okay, so again, if you have any ideas and names, get them to me and we'll resume if possible, and otherwise, we'll try to reach out to people on this issue.
So.
Possibly deal with it Monday night or if not, next.
So, right now, you wanna, we're gonna make a change, I guess, we're gonna say that we're gonna have one alternate. It seems like everyone, for us, the majority of people are transitioning. We're gonna pass them tonight?
Do we need motivation to do that?
Ask for two type rules?
Yeah.
As it is.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
So we'd need three names, right? We have three people there, you need two permanents and one alternate. And that list is out there, it just comes down to getting all the data by this month, and so we'll pass it, is what you're asking me to do?
If, if, if we can reach out to these people, find out if they have an interest or serve in under-spanaging board, and then we find, put a list together by Monday night, and yes, we'll try to do it with unanimous consent. And if I can't, we'll just give it one more week.
One more cycle, okay. The.
Actually, I know some of the people have day jobs, I don't know if they have a problem solving.
Some of it's careless.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Okay, is there a motion?
Well, we're not gonna, no, I'll do it unanimous consent.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
He's up again.
Okay, well, uh, budget reappropriation, water treatment plant staff, and golf course staff.
Exactly. So, in the city's water department, there is a vacancy, it is a water treatment plant trainee. And this was advertised, and one of the applicants who has been selected to fill this position is actually a employee of our sewer department. He has the necessary credentials to be a water treatment plant operator seventeen A, not the trainee. And management would like to appoint this person as a seventeen A operator, a full operator rather than a trainee, because it's beneficial to the city to, to have both, to have an operator in that line. The plan would, was always to, what we're planning for here is some succession in the department that's going to be occurring, and the trainee line, the plan was to hire someone, they would come on and move in, get their certification, and then become a seventeen A in, in the following year budget. So, we've got that opportunity right now with someone in-house that we'd like to move with. The existing budget for the trainee line is sufficient to support the rest of the year's cost if we were to hire this individual as a water treatment plant operator seventeen A, so it's budget neutral in, in this year. The second part of this request is relative to the ball fund, wherein we have hired a golf professional at a rate of salary, based salary, that is lower than what was budgeted. And that difference, we are going to use to hire a prof, an assistant golf professional at the base rate that was noted in here. And again, there is no, this is budget neutral as outlined in the evaluation and analysis.
Does the part-time person get help with that?
No.
Seasonal.
All right, so both of you are.
Yes, they are.
That makes some, uh, testing questions. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I'm gonna say one, the person I understand is vacating from the sewer loan to water, so what happens if they vacate a position? Would that be a vacancy that the department would be willing to fill?
Well, I should, I think you're saying that that would be eliminated.
No.
Because you're, you're appropriating the funds.
No, there is no, there's no change of revenue, what we've got is a park, a sewer department employee who was one of the people that applied for the opening in the water department. So they are going to, that individual who's selected will be filling the water department line. And a vacancy in there, and they, by doing that, creating a vacancy in the sewer department. Though what I was referring to is, within the water department budget itself, with the trainee vacancy, even though that's at a lower rate than we would like to hire this person, that has been vacant since the beginning of the year. So we've got initial savings that we need to hire at a little higher.
Okay, so, so we've got the first quarter savings to take for his full salary for the rest of the year, but it would require an adjustment next year.
Exactly.
Combine this whole thing, so.
Which we really were planning for, actually, anyway, because we were gonna hire as a trainee, get that person certified, and then it would be easier.
Okay, so really this is just to say, can we take the full year and use it, condense it into three or?
The budget says a trainee who's got the certification, but the budget limited, so it's an operator.
Operator, okay.
So, is the trainee position being eliminated?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's being eliminated. It's not a big vacant.
It's now gonna be the operator seventeen A.
Normally, that position would be a trainee for one year.
Right, right.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't adding an operator and adding a light trainee.
No, there, there's no additional FTEs in this process, it's just taking advantage of someone who's already here.
Any, any questions?
And we'll advertise a sewer position, and, excuse me, we'll be advertising that position as from the opening floor now.
Yes.
Yes. I will move it on second.
All of it, or?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And, uh, next one up, uh, here between the city of Kentucky and local thirty-seven N.
Phil's parole is informing that, uh, once a thirty-seven approved, the contract, uh, I'm wondering what's going on last time, and now we're back to the also a board for.
Any questions on this, the side of the negotiation? Any, uh, discussions out of, uh, what's got there?
I'll move it.
Any questions about your group? I move.
Second?
I'll move.
I, aye.
Great.
Congratulations.
Next three are in the central session.
And so, uh.
Some of those down to claims.
Yeah, we'll fight to it, yeah, and, uh, we're done, so, and we're recess, okay?
When should we recess?
All of it, or recess? We're recess.
I'll post the development plan for the first time here, is following a discussion on the amendment to the grant certificate of all, so, Valati, go.
Well, um, it's everything, like we discussed before, there was the public hearing last week, and we, uh, we heard from a couple of people on it. I've got the list of, um, just because the, the SLIC group was the one who spoke the most, about the list of some of the things that they proposed, if the council, you wanna go through that?
I'd like that, yes.
Okay.
Go through.
All right. Um, and I know, uh, Mr. Schelling's gonna give me a hand with a couple of these things they proposed. The first question that they had, they wanted you to consider that no inspections be made for owner-occupied properties up to four units, right now it's at, uh, two units. I think the way it's at right now, it's been, uh, working as well as anything else. Uh, I don't really think there's any reason for us to move up to four units. It makes sense for two units, you've got one owner occupied, they're looking at the other, um, but four is kind of a lot, and at that point, you're kinda getting into more of a business than just living in one and renting out the other. The next thing they, they asked for was, uh, that the inspection be extended to every three years and not every time there's a change in tenancy. I think right now, or, I can definitely say that right now, every change in tenancy, um, makes the most sense. Where, if we get to a point where there's not a lot of issues that they're running into when these inspections are going on, you know, that might be a time to talk about this down the road, but right now, uh, I think there's no question that the way we have it makes the most sense. Number three, they requested a checklist for what areas and items are gonna be inspected whenever there's a rental inspection, and this is something I had actually spoken with the SLIC group about before and announced to them that we were gonna be giving to them. I've been working on it with, uh, the building inspector, just, I think last Friday, we, uh, shot, we think is the final draft of that document down, and it just lays out exactly, it's kind of copying the sheet that the inspectors use, and that's the basis of the rental certificate itself. They look at, um, here's what we inspected, here's this part, here's this part, and they take notes on the side, so it just lists all those, and then it's got a little provision that explains that it, there's some other things, it's not only the things that are listed on the sheet exclusively, but it's, uh, other things, but those are the main ones. So that, we're gonna be getting out and putting on the, the website and getting out to the group very soon. Next thing they asked for is that rental certificate is, excuse me, rental certificate should only be denied if there's problems related to safety issues, not cosmetic issues with the property. And that's something that we're kind of already doing, in the sense that if there's a rental inspection that takes place, and, um, the issues, let's say there's a, something like a closet door missing, that's, you know, it's a violation, but it's not a safety issue that would warrant right away the inspection being failed. So what they do, the, the code officers do is they'll say, all right, at this point, we're gonna allow you to move forward, keep the tenant in here, you have X amount of time to fix this issue, and we're gonna come back and re-inspect it, and as long as this issue's taken care of, you're all fine. Whereas if it was a real safety issue, they'd say, all right, this place right now is not safe to live in at all, let's say there was no heat or something like that, and you couldn't keep the tenant there at that point in time. So, I think what's going on right now is fundamentally working with this thing that they've been asking for, and that's the same with their next consideration, was that landlords should be given enough time to finish needed repairs, and consideration should be given for, um, for weather conditions and an unexpected financial burden. And I've spoken with Mr. Schelling about this, and, uh, we definitely are already complying with that. Anytime that there would be an issue with this, it would come as, there's a lack of communication on what exactly the issues that the landlord is having with the, uh, the codes department, but anytime they know if, I mean, nobody's asking them to go out and paint their house in the middle of February. We're taking a very common sense approach, which has been, uh, the direction of the mayor, and, um, I don't, I don't think anybody would have any problem with that, as long as there is a good communication with the codes department about what they need, yeah.
You go back to the, the list, and then also, you know, certain individuals are more help, safety related versus cosmetic related. On that list, is there a way we can kind of differentiate with those who typically be, um, you know, these are the ones that you will be denied on to the spot, these are the ones that you'll be given, you know, a period of time, a corporate period of time to correct, meaning closet door? Because, you know, again, wanna make sure that it's fair to everybody, and that, you know, I don't get failed for not having a closet door on, but you get, you get some time to fix the closet doors, to speak, so is there critical one versus critical two period of damage?
I don't know that there, there is in the current draft, and that's something we'll definitely get out to the council, and we can amend it based on, you know, your feedback. Some things like, it'll say, you know, windows are being inspected, and there's probably some things that could be going on with the windows that wouldn't be a safety issue, and there's some that would be. So, it's gonna be hard to break it down and just keep it to, you know, one sheet that goes through every possibility, but, um, you know, that's definitely something worth looking into, and maybe the, uh, we could talk with, uh, Eric Skies about what the big, the most common things are, and put them on there, for sure.
Just a couple of things we talked about that are not city media, maybe it's, they're, but, um, we talked about attitude, rental certificates a year, as long as everything's up to code, there would be no charge with the third, or however many they have, I don't see that in here.
It, it is included in there.
Is it?
Yes.
I just didn't jump out at me, and then the other thing was, we talked about not only electrical work, but basic plumbing work that could be done, and then inspected later by a master plumber, I don't see the electrical. Maybe I'm not, maybe I don't have everything, but.
I, the, the plumbing was included as well. I don't have the copy of it right with me, but I, I know it's in there. And what it basically says is, uh, any plumbing work that takes place outside of the walls, which is a good catch-all, just, you know, not running pipes through the building, but sinks, that kind of stuff, toilets. Anything else about that? Uh, just a couple more things that SLIC proposed, one was that code enforcers directly, uh, when they get complaints from tenants, that they refer back to the landlords to, uh, take care of them first, and that's something that, um, we feel pretty strongly about, that we're not, uh, able to do at this point in time. Just because, I mean, these are law violations, somebody wouldn't call the police, and then the police wouldn't call the landlord before going to the property to see if there's, you know, domestic disturbance, and on the same level, you know, these are complaints that, you know, landlords should know what's going on at their premises. And, uh, I think the, the real fear behind this is that sometimes tenants might use the system to try to, you know, get their landlords into a bad situation, and we definitely have safeguards in place if people think that's going on, and if they let us know, then, uh, we work with them to investigate and make sure that's not the case. But, um, at the end of the day, the burden has to be on the property owner to know what's going on in the property, not on the city to, kind of be the, the middleman, to let the property owners know when there's a problem at their place. And this last one that there was concern about was, uh, the city's requirement that we be named a certificate holder on the landlord's insurance policy when they re, apply for a rental certificate. And that I've spoken to SLIC about a little bit, and first of all, there's no requirement that the city, or that the landlord put the city on as a, a certificate holder. And a certificate holder, all that does is let the, the people named know if the policy lapses or not. What the requirement is, is that people put up a bond of twenty-five thousand dollars to cover any expenses that would come if the city has to go in and board up the property, or if it burns down, and the city has to come and demolish it or take care of that. But what we would accept in lieu of a bond, if they wanted to provide, uh, proof of a liability insurance policy to that amount, then they could, and just the city has to be named as a, a certificate holder on that, just so we know if somebody doesn't show us proof of it and immediately go and cancel it, and then we find out eleven months later when it burns down, that there was actually no insurance on the building. And, uh, in the law department, we spoke into representatives from the insurance industry, and, um, we've received assurances that this is not a burdensome or costly, uh, task, and, um, that is something that people would be able to do. So, I don't have anything further to add on that, I don't know if, uh, Eric, did you have anything on the?
Yeah, there's just a couple here, I'll leave there, um, uh, the points that Carl was making regarding cosmetic issues versus life safety issues, there's really nothing in the code that's, it's a cosmetic issue, and if it's against the code or against the law, it's against the law. And we're gonna go in, and those will be set, the list that we've compiled is, uh, very complete to what the rental inspection is, is there to do, it's to dare to look at the life safety issues of this property, and the safety of it regarding to the landlord exiting the property and the tenants leaving there during the night. Now, while we're there, um, if we see other code violations, and we'll call them cosmetic for the, for the simple term, everybody understanding that, um, we then say, we're gonna, you know, these are also issues, your rental's not denied, we're gonna hold it, we're gonna hold your rental, and you can keep your tenant in, ninety-nine percent of the time, the tenants already exist in the, in the unit when we go for the inspection. And that's something that by law is typically, is supposed to not allow, but we do allow it, understanding that, you know, over weekends or at the ends of months and things like that, if these tenants and these people are switching them, that's fine, so when we get there, if we do notice these things, we're gonna work with that landlord and say, you have to do it ten or thirty days to go ahead and, and complete these things, and we're gonna be diligent about saying that they need to do those things. Because again, they are a violation, and in doing so, Carl made a great point, as long as there's a communication, I have yet to deny anybody an extension on any, um, repair in their home, as long as they're communicating with us and working on it, they can show in good faith that these things are being accomplished. Everybody's gotten that courtesy. The life safety issues, it'll be immediate denial, the person's in there, we're gonna say, you gotta be twenty-four, forty-eight hours, this has to be taken care of, or we can have later today, we do that quite frequently, if we have a smoke detector or something that's not in place, that, that has to be, and we already saw this person's moved in, money's exchanged, we don't wanna interrupt that. But, um, you know, those things need to be taken care of immediately. And for the most part, this is a very, very consistent list, it's been our rental certificate since it was born, um, that's listed very clearly on there, every time there's a rental, the, the landlord gets to keep a, a copy of that, so we're, this is a redundancy, and we're more than happy to do, we're issued with every rental inspection, um, that's, that's, um, scheduled with us, you'll have it as she, you know exactly what we're looking for, um, we're gonna communicate very clearly to that. Again, landlords can always come and ask us questions, what else would you get, we're, we're also, uh, an information resource, so they're more than welcome to do that. But it is the illness of the landlords to understand all the rules and regulations of their businesses, we're, we're gonna help as much as we can. So those are, you know, the cosmetic thing is really something that we've never denied anybody a rental based on a cosmetic, we told you have a violation, you need to fix it. Now, if that's ignored, then it's gonna continue through the process, it needs to be taken care of, but the fact that we let the renter in already, and these issues are here, we wanna work very, we're closer to the landlord getting accomplished. We're in the process of, uh, we revamped our, um, landlord registration and tenant information, it's now consolidated into one package, and we're gonna ask that all landlords, this, this, this whole process is, has been completely, uh, finished, to have them come in and, and supply us with new informations, there are new questions, new informations that we're looking for, and precisely that being insurance, um, and/or bond on the property, so if there's a cash round event, we understand that there is some wear and all, we'll take care of these properties, and not burden the city with that. So we'll be doing that, and it's a very user-friendly thing, we'll have it uploaded, you can download, you can print it yourself, finish it, bring it in, and just simply supplies for that. And then as your tenant, uh, your tenancy's changed, they're just the rear part of page three of this, this is the only thing needs to do, we wanna know that the new tenant's in there, so if we pull up to a life safety situation, know exactly who we're looking for, how many people, we can do head counts, we can ask people who are there, and we'd like that to be accurate, so we can ask somebody, is this shoe, and is there anybody else here? Those are things that we, you know, have been very, very lax in, in taking this information, um, we're going through all twenty thousand plus files, we're getting out by hand, trying to compile a list of landlord and information, renter information gaps that we have, and then we're gonna have, um, my new housing officer will be going out very systematically and approaching these properties and saying, we'd like to obtain some information from you, we'll give you kind of do that for sure. But it should be, you know, publicly known that, you know, this is, this is the law, we have, and, and we're confirming this now, is what we thought, we have less than a twenty percent compliance, the landlord's registration and rental certificate program, and it is, certainly that may be worse. So there's an awful lot of information that we just have not been able to work with, and that leaves us with a lot of properties that we've never been, that we couldn't honestly tell you the condition of. So it's important that this is here, um, I think it's, uh, I think it's a good program, I think we've worked very hard, I'd like to continue to work with the landlord groups as we develop, um, maybe moving toward two or three-year inspections, based on a history. I'd really like to work with that, over the next year or two years, accrediting those landlords that are doing a great job, and understanding that, you know, every time we go there, you have all your ducks in a row, that your, your, your homes are violations free, that you move quickly to work on the violations that are, and we can do that, and I think that's just gonna be a synergy between, you know, the city hall, the council, and the landlords to demonstrate that. You know, right now, we're kind of less than a twenty percent compliance, I'm not willing to say that we want them to go to a two or three-year inspection gap, um, a lot can happen to a property in two or three years, especially in life safety issues. But there's an awful lot that we're gonna continue to bloom out of this, and, um, we're more than willing to continue to work with landlord groups and kind of vet out any of the interests they may have, helping us move along and making this thing work together. But, uh, there's a lot here that I think provides, you know, the opportunity to, for us to get in there, feel good about this, and for them to have the ease of working with us. Any questions?
Uh, just really a statement in the fact that, uh, I think this is a good step in, in trying to work toward, you know, what works for the city, what works for our responsible landlords, and that was gonna be my question to you, I'm really, really happy to hear you say that as we move forward, we can look at those, um, um, extended certificate times for someone who has a history with the city. I think that's, that's important too, to, you know, there, uh, SLIC is a clear indication that there's many, many people who have a vested interest in being good business people.
Absolutely.
And I, I'm very excited to hear that we'll work for that, and I agree that we have to put some systems in place and, and kind of set a benchmark, um, but I'm, I'm happy to hear that that's, you know, I know we talked about that in one of our meetings, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that.
And I'd like to move toward a preferred landlord status, where they, you know, we recognize this, and they get a sticker that goes on their house, and the tenants are then looking for the sticker and saying, this is, this is a landlord that cares, and this is where I wanna be. You know, and I also wanna work toward what SLIC had, uh, demonstrated, or, uh, mentioned in our last meeting, some tenant accountability, Carl and I are working toward helping them understand, or helping us understand, how we can hold tenants accountable. We will be providing an option for all the rental inspections, for any photo inspection, it will be an option, there can be a small charge of that, we anticipate about an hour's worth of an officer's time to take extra and enter photos of every, every part of the house, and then we can download that as part of their rental file, and if they would like to then pursue a, a legal action against the tenant, then we would have an independent timestamped condition of that property at that time. So those are something else we'd like to offer as an option, now, they can certainly do this on their own, and we help them do that too, but this is something we'd like to offer. You know, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of reasons that we wanna make this, um, work very much for both sides, because we're all spending resources, you know, and we're spending resources in redundancy, again and again, the same problems or the same things, and I'm quite certain we can fix this.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes, uh, so I, I received a couple of emails, and I just wanted to know, to, um, if someone, if you go to, to inspect someone's property, and a phone person, an officer goes in, that person refuses to let them in, um, what, what happened to that?
Well, I, uh, the way the code's written is that, um, we have to do the inspection to get a rental certificate. People don't have to consent for the code officer to come in, if they don't want to, that's absolutely their right, and then, um, what would happen is, we'd go through the law department, and we'd get a warrant from the judge, and then do the inspection that way. And that's, that's nothing new, that's how it's been the whole time.
I mean, it needs to be in place, we need to be, you know, certain that this space is safe.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Can I start?
You touched on, you're talking about a little bit, so one of the requests from, um, some organization, the identification, so if, if a tenant calls the city and says, you know, I want you guys to come and do an inspection, and it might be where there's some, you know, landlord and tenant, you guys can all, or you say, oh, look, the smoke detectors, there's no smoke detectors, or whatever, and then you issue a citation at that point?
And depending on the severity of the photo situation, I'll, I'll say that something is very, very consistent, we take complaints all day long, or tenant phone calls, and, and you'll hear it again and again through the office, have you spoken to your landlord about this? I mean, it is the next question we ask, so we do, we do provide that information to them, say, have you spoke to your landlord about this, 'cause we grab it, I use our resource, but if they are filing a complaint with me, we have the obligation to go follow up on that, and so they let us in and.
Right, which is, which is fine, I think that's good, the tenant's saying, hey, my landlord's not keeping the place up, I'm not gonna see it, that's, that's a good tool that residents will have. But then, if we issue a citation, is it my understanding that we don't then notify the landlord of the citation?
Oh, no, they, they certainly do.
Okay, they can.
But it depends on the situation too, like, is what you're saying, raising, um, the smoke detectors. Of, the guys go to a property, and they find there's no smoke detectors, but they have a rental certificate on file, that means the city inspected it at some point, they saw smoke detectors, they said, all right, everything's good, and then that's the kind of situation where, where we would follow up with the tenant to make them fix the problem, because, you know, obviously landlord's not gonna go there, take down the smoke detectors after the city's already seen that they were up there to go put them in a different apartment. So we're definitely using common sense with that. But in the sen, the times where, you know, there's no rental certificate, the person's living there, um, you know, in that situation, uh, in most cases, it's on the landlord to make sure that the unit's in compliance.
I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, if there's something going on at the house, that they're getting cited, that might. that they're getting cited, that might be a fee or a fine, that we're not just putting the sticker on the window.
No, 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 they absolutely don't.
How they're buying the landlords, that they know they have a bill to pay, they know they have an issue resolved.
And that's actually one of the largest components of the new landlord registration, is if you are in Schenectady County, then we can rely on the contact information given to us. And if you're not, no resident in Schenectady County, half provide an agent who is in Schenectady County. We are going to be verifying, when that person's provided to us by the landlord, we're either going to call that agent, and we're going to confirm that he is aware that he's the agent, that he has to respond within twenty-four hours of communication, and we let them choose what form of communication they want us to offer. So when there is an issue with the property, that's exactly what we'll do, is immediately make that communication and say, join us on site, go down to City Hall, whatever it is, and make you aware of it. Depending on severity, we'll give you that timeframe, saying it's a tomorrow, or it's a third day. You know, so it's, it's a very gracious process if it's in place and working well.
Ms. Ford, and when people are going to have their property inspected, how much time are they given, notification are they given to know that the code enforcement's on?
They actually make the schedule. So they're the ones who call us and say, please come and inspect. You know, we never reach out and say, we're going to come and inspect you. You know, unless we file, we get a complaint. But the landlords actually schedule their own inspections. So they're well aware in advance, they can choose as far out as they'd like. And if they know what they need to fix, it would certainly be in their best interest to get there, and, you know, a couple of days before, just make sure it's all fair.
Other questions? Or other comments? I'm in interview.
Nothing else from me.
All right. So we can move this forward?
Actually, you pulled me forward. I'd like to see if there were a couple things that Mr. Carl Tito mentioned that aren't actually written to the legislation, and he talks about the different things that on SLIC list. I'd really like to see the legislation completed when we go on it and move it forward.
You shouldn't have a copy of the completed, the document that...
I don't think it's complete. I don't see anything about plumbing, and I don't see anything about the... Oh, I'm throwing shade on the boss, but I think he put out a page for you.
Oh, and I do have one other question. In terms of the plumbing and the electrical being done by the owners or somebody else who's not licensed, has our, so the person who's in charge of our plumbing or electrician here think that's okay?
Well, the thing is, this is, this is a practice that's been on the books for a long time. Any homeowner right now, they can go and they can apply for any permit to do work on their own property, electrical or plumbing. It's where they live, yeah. And they, the plumbing or the electrical inspector has a right to give them a little test to make sure that they're confident that they know what they're doing. But it would really just be extending that to not only the property that you own, but the property, or the property that you live in, but the property that you own.
Ms. Frazo?
It's my understanding though, that because it's your own property, you still are required to have a licensed plumber or electrician inspect their work once it's completed, correct?
No. It's, it's the same as...
That's what we originally talked about.
I'm, the city comes, it's the same permit process, like anybody would. You want to do something that requires a permit, it's just letting you do it on your own in kind of a lesser degree than you could with your own home. But they get it, the city inspector has to go there, inspect it, give the stamp of approval.
So we'll remove this pending getting the extra page?
I'd like to see it in its entirety.
Well, but I'm saying, can we approve it pending, apparently there's an extra page that we didn't get, and if Chad gets that to us, and unless we have issues with, what do we see then?
Part of what's, some part of what you've given us is missing information, is what I'm understanding, is just one more page?
Everything that I've, everything I've told you is in there, when I wrote it, it's in there.
There's a front, back copy. There's a paper on the floor right there, you missed it.
And does that include the information that you read from your sheet as well, regarding what's going to be included as a result of the landlord's request?
Nothing that I read on the sheet today, going over the landlord's request. That's just describing the stuff that we're already doing that doesn't require legislation. You know, for example, you know, the checklist. There's nothing about a checklist in any of what we, I've written up, but it's something that we're just doing. We don't, we don't need legislation for it. You know, if it's something you really want in there.
More procedurally versus legally?
Yeah.
I'd like to see it fully, as part of it. But if I can get the other sheet and it satisfies that, then...
So I'll entertain a motion then to move this forward pending receipt of this extra page.
Yes, I will. That's all, we need like to see all the information for what we're looking for.
All there. Okay, we had two public hearings, fence permits and paving permits. No one spoke in those hearings. Does anyone have any questions about this, Peter or these?
It does a P on the side box, curves of the right, it says, did we change it to fifty dollars to what should be set from time to time by resolution? And if it makes it so we want to change it, it will be here. Is that already by resolution, or is it a resolution?
You'd have to do a resolution to that at the point in time.
So if we pass this on Monday night, Tuesday, there's no, right, we do a resolution, is there any due to a resolution?
I would think included a resolution setting it at the fifty dollar rate.
Okay. Same time.
So anyway, so I'll entertain a motion then to approve the fence permits.
And what is this, the fence permit?
The fence permit?
It was in the same situation, fifty dollars, set time to time by resolution. And there'd be a resolution included with that as well.
And so see if that's part of it.
Defense, does this include some which replacing as existing fence?
If you, it would be like a building program, the difference between a repair and a replacement. If you're repairing your old fence, you wouldn't need it. If you're putting in a new one, then you would.
Even though you're putting out the same fence bolts, you just, let's say your fence come out and rot it out with your fence, you're replacing another piece of the fence, not getting it.
If it's just one piece, it's rotted out, and you're just putting it back in there, then no, that would just be a repair.
I'll move it as long as you give us the legislation with the same amendment as the paving.
Ms. Ford, good seconds. All in favor? Aye. All right. Paving permits, same thing. Motion to approve. Right, fifty seconds, Ford field, all in favor? Done. Consolidated plan, Mr. Ferga.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's always a rite of spring when I get to present the mayor's proposed consolidated plan. And today, I'm presenting the 2013 proposed consolidated plan. If you look at our block grant funding that we received from 2004 to our proposed 2013 annual allocation, you'll see basically it's been a decline in block grant funding that we've been receiving. And then this year, we're proposing a five percent reduction, and this was based on a letter we received from HUD in regard to the current sequester. So we're reducing the block grant proposed budget by five percent. We're also reducing the emergency solutions grant budget by five percent, and the home investment partnerships budget by five percent. And again, we were told by HUD to do this. So that's reflected in the mayor's proposed budget. If, Ahmad, if you could just turn back, please. Thank you. If you look at what happened last year, in 2012, we had a seventeen percent reduction in block grant funding as opposed to 2011. So we reduced seventeen percent last year, and then we're another five percent this year for 2013. So you add that up, that's twenty-two percent since 2011. So the outlook is not good for block grant funding. In terms of available funding that we're anticipating to get, and our fiscal year is July first, 2013, through June thirtieth, 2014. We're looking at the new fiscal year block grant, one million eight hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars. We have three hundred and seven thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars in prior years recaptured money. And these are projects that either were canceled, or we recoup the balance to reprogram. Program income from two activities that are no longer active. One is the Schenectady Local Development Corporation. We're looking at sixteen thousand seven hundred six dollars in anticipated program income, and then the Economic Development Fund, fifty thousand. And these are basically the repayment of loans made to for-profit entities. The Emergency Solutions Grant, this money's used to support homeless activities. And with the five percent reduction, we're at one hundred ninety thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars. Home Investment Partnerships, the home program, this is for the development of affordable housing. The new fiscal year amount is two hundred thousand, two hundred ninety-seven thousand four hundred twenty dollars. And we also have two areas where we're anticipating program income, hundred thousand dollars in program income from the, basically from the sale of new homes. And we're the participating jurisdiction, which means we administer the home money for the city of Troy and the Towne Colony. We're in a home consortium with these entities. And if, in other words, if Troy sells a house, we get a cut. If we sell a house, we get a cut through Better Neighborhoods. So that's what this hundred thousand dollar figure is. The Schenectady Housing Development Fund Corporation, this is anticipated program income at eight thousand. If you add all these numbers up, total available funding for the 2013 fiscal year is two million eight hundred and one thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars. If you look at the Emergency Solutions Grant, we have six projects recommended for a hundred ninety thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars. The first one is Bethesda House Homeless Housing and Eviction Prevention Program for fifty thousand dollars. And this is basically salaries and fringe benefits to secure permanent housing for the homeless. Looking at case management and outreach, that type of activity. Bethesda House Day Program Drop-In Center, recommended amount for twenty thousand. This is the facility on State Street. Salaries and fringes, again, provides basically comprehensive services for the homeless. And there's also housing there. Safe House, the manager counselor against salaries and fringes. Safe House provides emergency shelter for homeless youths. And we're recommending thirty thousand dollars go to that organization. Schenectady Community Action Program, SCAT, recommending sixty-six thousand three hundred dollars go to their homeless prevention and court advocacy program. This is paying salaries of counselors and attorneys, providing legal assistance for homeless individuals. CARES Incorporated, they do something which is called the Homeless Management and Information System. And this is a HUD mandated system to keep track of homeless individuals. They do a point-in-time count, and they track this of all these agencies, the homeless activities of these agencies. And then lastly, Department of Development, there's a little bit of money, fourteen thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars for Emergency Solution Grant Administration. And that goes to our consolidated plan monitor. Public Service Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area Recommendations, we're proposing to fund this particular area at a hundred and eight thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. And there are four activities. These are all mainly block grant funded activities. This public ser, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area falls outside, if you recall, there's a fifteen percent cap under the block grant on funding public service activities. If you're in this Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area, which is basically Central State Street and Hamilton Hill, three census tracts, these activities, they're public services, but they fall outside that fifteen percent cap, which is good. The first one is Better Neighborhoods Incorporated Home Buyer Education and Foreclosure Prevention Program. We're proposing forty thousand for that activity. Better Neighborhoods Incorporated is the only HUD certified housing counselor in the area. This pays for salaries and benefits. Carver Community Center Expanded Youth Services Program, we're recommending fourteen thousand and eight dollars for this activity. Again, it basically salary infringes going to Carver. And this is, these three, this, this is at last year's level, so we did not reduce this amount they're getting, recommended to be getting. Hamilton Hill Art Center, Project Art Reach, this provides after-school arts program, and again, salaries and benefits. Fourteen thousand in block grant, fourteen thousand six hundred and eight dollars in block grant funding, same level as last year. And lastly, MCTAP, the Minority Contractors Technical Assistance Program, we're recommending that they get funded in, at forty thousand dollars in block grant money. And pays for a part-time salary and non-personnel costs. Public Service Recommendations, these are all block grant funded recommendations, and this is the fifteen percent cap. And we're right at our cap of two hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars. So we cannot go beyond that. Boys and, we have, we have seven public service activities that we're recommending for funding. First one is Boys and Girls Clubs of Schenectady. This is the Quacking Bush Park recreational and educational programming, Quacking Bush Park for the summer, at twenty-six thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars. Basically salaries, some non-personnel costs. Capital District Center for Independence, recommended at six thousand three hundred and eight dollars. This funds our Office of Disability Services office located on the ground floor in City Hall. And basically, it's an advocacy service for the disabled. Schenectady Inter-City Ministry, Sitcom Summer Lunch Program, recommended at two thousand dollars, and this is at last year's level. The Schenectady County Youth Bureau, this is for two park programs, one at Hillhurst and the other at Steinmetz Park. Recreation and Educational Enrichment Programs. And again, it's heavy on, on salaries and benefits, and some non-personnel costs. The Schenectady Police Department, this is the Community Policing Program, and this partially pays for salaries and benefits for seven community police officers serving Mott Pleasant, Central State Street, and Hamilton Hill. And a hundred eighty-seven thousand ninety-eight dollars. The YMCA, Jerry Burrell Park Drop-In Summer Program, this is day and nighttime activities for, basically for youths. Same level of support as in 2012. Same thing goes for the YWCA. This is the pool programming at the East Front Street Pool, recommended at twenty thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Same level of funding as 2012. Public Works Recommendations, these are all block grant funded activities. First one, Code Enforcement, Eric Schilling's department, at six hundred thousand. This pays partially for sixteen personnel in Code Enforcement Office. The six hundred thousand is at, is at the same level of support as 2012. Same thing with the Department of Neighborhood Revitalization. Same thing with the Department of Neighborhood Revitalization. This is the Schenectady Neighborhood Assistance Program, or SNAP. We're recommending $400,000 for that program. Same level of support as 2012. And this cleans up the blighted properties in the neighborhood. It's personnel and non-personnel costs. Community Development Program Delivery. This pays, partially pays for a person in the Department of Development for all program delivery activities. The Engineering Department, Street Rehabilitation Program, recommended at $303,689. And what this will do, using the new asphalt recycling process, this will rehab approximately two miles of city streets. This is an interesting one you probably haven't seen before. But we will be coming to you for authorization to apply for a Section 108 Loan Guaranteed Loan. And so we can undertake property demolition. What we'd be applying for is a $3 million loan from Housing and Urban Development from HUD over 20 years. And secured by the annual Community Development Block Grant allocation. So we're assuming it's going to be around. But HUD really promotes this. They love this, this program. This represents, the $56,000 represents interest at 4%. That's the $6,000, plus $50,000 in principal. Now, this is going to be used in tandem with the $100,000 in demolition that the city's going to be getting from the county. So if you throw this all together, it's about $150,000 you have to pay every year for the next 20 years, plus the interest. But again, we will be coming with this to you for your blessing. But we think it's a great idea. You get a $3 million line of credit. If an average cost of demolition of a property's $30,000, you can do 100 properties, you know, at the same time, conceptually. So it's a good, you get a lot of, a major impact in terms of demolition. And I think if you, you know, my opinion, if you ask me what's most needed in the city of Schenectady in terms of a block grant activity, I would say it's totally, has to be demolition, very easily. So I think this would be something very positive for the city. Other housing, there are 10 Housing Assistance Recommendations totaling $393,051. The first one is Better Neighborhoods Incorporated, operating funding, funded through the block grant and Home Investment Partnerships Program. The home amount, the 7435, represents a 5% operating cap that you can use with the Home Investment Partnerships money. So it's a 5% cap, and that's reflected there. This is just general administrative overhead for Better Neighborhoods. The Community Land Trust of Schenectady, this funds, the $10,000 in block grant money funds their housing counseling program. And that's salaries and benefits, primarily. The Community Land Trust of Schenectady, operating funding, similar to Better Neighborhoods operating funding. It's for general administrative overhead. And they're at the 5% cap, too. The Community Land Trust Homeowner Rehabilitation Program using $75,000 in home money is recommended. And what this is, it's a residential rehab program that'll be matched by New York State. For, it may be used for first-time homeowners. Schenectady Housing Development Fund, Second Mortgage Program. This is the anticipated program income. We're looking at $8,000. More housing activities. Habitat for Humanity, we're looking very closely with them currently. This is for a Neighborhood Revitalization Program. This would be, again, rehab of residential buildings. They're looking at our North Side Target Area, working with us to reclaim that area. Better Neighborhoods Incorporated, Affordable Housing Program. This is program delivery costs, personnel costs for them at $50,000 in home money on a per-project basis. Department of Development Housing Program Delivery. This is a part-time person in our department who does home, basically, home administration. Northeast Parent and Child Society, Youth Build Affordable Housing Project. We're looking, we're proposing $50,000 in home money for this project. This refers to 323 Schenectady Street. If you're familiar with that, we would be demol-, demolishing the building on site. And then Northeast Parent and Child Society, in cooperation with Habitat and Youth Build, would be building a new green home on that site. So the $50,000 is basically paying for demolition and some site improvements. Bethesda House Rapid Housing Eviction Subsidy Fund, recommending $35,838 in home funding for this. This provide, this will provide actual security deposits and rental assistance for people at risk of being evicted. And then finally, we get to the administrative recommendations at $409,363. The block grant restricts us to funding administrative activities at 20%. So there's a 20% cap on these administrative activities we can fund using the block grant. The three activities, we are at that cap. It's $379,621. And first one is the Affirmative Action Minority Recruitment Contract Compliance Function. This is, will be with the county, with Schenectady County. This will be paying Miriam's. Miriam could just, the salary and benefits, partially. Department of Development Administration Costs. This home figure represents a 10% amount. That's a 10% cap that you can use for administrative activities. We're at our 10% cap here. And basically, this funds five positions, salaries plus benefits in the Department of Development. And then the Finance Department Administration Costs of, we're recommending $25,000 from the block grant for. Very similar to a cost allocation-type general overhead for the Finance Department that the block grant will be paying for. So for more information, and I'm sure you need more, please contact me, Richard Perga, Acting Director in the Department of Development, 382-5147, 382-5147. Or email me at rparga@schenectadyny.gov. What's next? Tomorrow, there'll be a full-page display ad in the Schenectady Gazette outlining all these projects with project allocations. There will be a 30-day comment period beginning March 20th through April 18th. And we're proposing to hold a public hearing on the 2013 Proposed Consolidated Plan on April 8th at a regularly scheduled council meeting. April 22nd, hopefully, City Council approves the proposed consolidated plan as the final plan. And then that gives me some time to do an application and submit this to HUD Buffalo by May 15th. Any questions?
I noticed that, and again, when we pronounced, there's a number of things that there were requests.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct. You have a complete spreadsheet that lists all the applicants and includes the activities that were not funded. Correct. That's correct.
And I notice, there's several of them. And several of our neighborhood associations have said, we'd like to do this, we'd like to do that.
Correct.
We have here what, you know, what the recommendation is and what they should do. Will there be anything going out to those groups who applied and aren't getting kind enough to say, this is what we recommend that you do? Because I noticed some of them say they refer to this department or that.
That's exactly what we did. We got, we would get a request from a neighborhood association. And we would refer that, like, for instance, there were signs, signage, like neighborhood signage coming into a neighborhood. We referred that, like, to signal control. So for his action, for John Kaluca's action. Yep.
And is there any thing, were there any new funded at all this year?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Were there any new programs funded at all this year?
Well, the Section 108 Loan Guaranteed Program, yeah, is the outstanding example. Yep.
If that's within the city, any major programs that were new that ran it?
No, no. And again, you, we lost, you know, with this sequester situation, we're losing 5% of the block grant money. That translates into over $96,000. You know, and we're trying to maintain the same level of service like we're giving to our agencies. And I think we did that. But it's different, it just gets harder and harder because the caps also keep shrinking. You know, if you get less money in total, the caps go down. Public service caps and administrative caps. It's all proportional. Sure.
Any other questions? Tonight, all what we're going to use is common for the public hearing on April 8th. We said we're going to have several weeks to continue the discussion. Okay, is Porter here? Is Brad up there?
Oh, yes.
All in favor? Just for my mind, yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, last item on the first D and P is a resolution recognizing Carol Mary from your old board. People have, you know, worked with the YWCA for ten years.
Yes, I'd like to recognize Carol for her work down under the Y, but also for leadership with the domestic violence task force. She should retire in April. She will, yeah, it's going to be a big loss. So I think she deserves some recognition for her years of hard work at the state. So I would like to move that.
Right, Sarah's second. Is that Porter field? All in favor?
Hi.
Is there anything else behind the course of the job and playing? All in favor of your turn? So, is that it? Oh, yes.
Is there another one?
That's, I remember someone else.
Okay, so all in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, we are, sure.
Call or collaborations. Again, recognition of Paul Mitchell School. They're a wonderful community partner in addition to their free hug day that they do once a year. They also do a series of, they call them fundraisers, but they really benefit both local and national nonprofits. And so just a nice little feel-good recognition for their recent day of fundraising over at the school. So, all in favor of that?
Very good. May I have a second?
Second.
Excellent, all was in favor.
Hi.
Wonderful. And on to abandonment of Oregon Avenue.
This, I think, has already been preliminarily discussed. There was a public hearing. Jason Pike spoke. But we're just talking about abandoning Oregon Avenue from Gulf Road to the crosstown. The DOT has been contacted and advocacy discussions with them about handling the closing of the intersection of the crosstown and so on. But everything appears to be moving forward. And we're ready to actually do the abandonment. And as we held a public hearing, the only thing we need is the action of the council.
I'm ready to move forward.
One second. All righty, all was in favor?
Hi.
Very good. Any other business to come before? Government operations?
None.
Okay. Excellent, all was in favor.
Hi. Gulf Water Health and Recreation. First, we attend that is acknowledging March Women's History Month. I would just like to do a ceremony of resolution to acknowledge March as Women's History Month and to invite a woman down from Schenectady residents who have done a lot in terms of women's history in Schenectady. So I'm just going to, I entertain a motion to, is that?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, resolution recognizing March and what, yeah. Now you say, I'm a resolution. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, Mr. McCarthy, the musical dance performance by the Trinity Conference?
The Gulf Coast Advisory is nine members. They're staggered terms. The last time the council showed that legislation was a year. I think that prior to the Republican Council, I think it was just somewhat deficient. The names before you are largely individuals who have served before. And I again randomly drew the names out with the exception of Bill Rinkler's who just gave a little one year appointment. This will get this up and running to be more active with the, yes. Just a marking of the course and the individual activities there.
Any questions? All right, no.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Can we, this is the one the Simon's Community Aid Foundation? The one, we have a form. And then we'll.
It's right outside.
And then Porter. Okay, I just did, just now.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see, do you have any other? Do you want me to come along? That's a free little sugar and caffeine.
No, I'm fine.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just trying to be around for claims, that's all.
Hopefully, we're here.
It's ready. Okay. Thank you. So this time is donations first.
Blew through the rest of it very quickly.
All right, no full round. It was.
Guess we did got here.
Yeah. Two hours ago, yeah.
Yes, Simon's Park Renovations. This is the $600,000 project that, of which 75% or $450,000 was part of the New York State grant that was approved last year. Went out to bid. We got our bids back, which we believe are very competitive, which you see in your packet, some of the bids there. This is a little bit different than typical city contracts that I'd go out under median engineering as this is an architectural kind of project. A lot of it has to do mostly with the bathhouse itself. Hence, you'll see that we're actually awarding four contracts as, under Wicks' law, if a contract is of this size, you have to break it out by discipline, which is general mechanical plumbing and electrical. This isn't a contract where we're going to have a general contractor and then subs under them. The city actually is going to enter into four contracts. And then my department will manage the four contracts internally. So, are there any, any questions on it? As you notice, we have the general contractor, it's including alternates two, three, and four. Alternate one is demolition of the facility. Some of the select demolition inside, which was removal of toilets, sinks, and certain walls and things like that. That we're doing with in-kind services. The city has actually already completed 90% of that work and will be finishing the rest this week. So that, that was something that we took off the table to save the city.
Uh, it is, well, if you're, if you're referring to what I believe you're referring to, when this was originally set up, uh, it was set up under two codes, under $450,000. One code was for $60,000, which was Synthesis, who was 5999.
Right, right.
And then the other code was for general balance of the grant. We have, uh, spent a, a large portion of 59, because all the plans are done, all the design is done, the plans are out. They have, uh, $9,000 remaining for construction administration, where they come out, they're going to help us and assist us to make sure the project moves along accordingly, and help us with some of the paperwork. That's part of it. So they still have a balance of that. We can submit now for reimbursement.
Okay.
We, we are, how this works, though, is just so you're aware, because I had to learn this on my own, this is different than Erie Boulevard. Erie Boulevard was, and this took me about two to three weeks to figure out kind of the system. Erie Boulevard, we use a city share, uh, and it's under a, an 80-15-5 reimbursement, where the city receives 80% from the federal government, 15% from the state if eligible, and then the city's on the hook for 5%, which is typically the 80-20, uh, but in this case, 80-15-5. And that's how Erie Boulevard's proceeded, and that's how I've been proceeding with that. This is a, a little bit different. It's a New York State Parks Grant. And how this works is that the total reimbursement is actually 75% of what the project does. So if we have to, when we submit this 599, we'll actually get 75% back of the 599. When we, and under this, because we don't have shares, it's, you have to submit every dime you spend under the Parks Grant. We're actually going to submit time, materials of what we've done for this demo in-house to them, and they're going to reimburse us 75% of what we have. We're going to submit anything we do in-house, because the Parks Department needs to see an itemized dime-for-dime thing. At the end of the project, when we're done, and we've expended $600,000, albeit cash money or general services, we're going to see that 75% of that has been reimbursed. So right now, I have not filed for any reimbursements yet. We can, uh, under that contract, however, I haven't done it so yet.
Okay. So the full amount will be restored to us? I believe it's 75%.
Right. Well, right. As we spend money, 75% back.
The full amount will be restored, because we're going to do some of the stuff through kind and service, so the money that we get back from the state will, that part of the original, what we're used.
But that was for synthesis, because that was specifically for the architects, architectural study and synthesis, that part A.
That's bigger reverse.
Okay. Very good. Okay, any other questions?
I just wanted to point out, uh, you know, looking at these things, we had, uh, there's a general construction, we had four companies bidding on it, for the plumbing, looks like we had five different companies bidding on it, for the electrical, and this is, this is great, um, we're going to do, yeah, getting electrical.
And, uh, and I, well, you know, Synthesis really, you know, got us in line, and really, we really pushed to get this out, because the thought was, and we got what we, what we thought was, get this out in the winter, when there's not a lot of work going on, when what we said was the contractors might be hungrier, they might be willing to go, and we saw that. We, we think that that paid off, because our estimates were all right online, or some cases low, so we were happy with the results.
Any other questions? You have a motion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, what about the next three years?
Yes. Uh, we have fertilizers, pesticides, and turf supplies for the Schenectady Municipal Golf Course. This is actually gone through the county. This was a bid put out through the county, which we are using as kind of our, our supplies. Uh, as you see, there's a note in here from our current slash previous, it's, he's on a one-month extension right now. Uh, groundskeeper at the golf course, as he is, uh, familiar with all of these. It's broken out in the recommendation of, we awarded to the lowest bidder on all of them but a small minority, which were, I believe, items 11, 22, and 38, where the lowest bid item did not meet the specifications, as in the bid packet. So we went with the items that did meet the bid specifications. For the other, how many? 36 items, or actually 37 items, they went with the lowest bidder. And this is through a joint program with the county.
Any questions?
I'm trying to sort here, um, I'm not sure if I have the book or whatever. Is there indication in terms of pricing where it's gone from prior, is it, we saved money from last year or some margin from last year?
I actually don't know. I haven't, I haven't done anything where I comparative analysis with last year. It's something that I, I probably could do by pulling up the bids from next year, but I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. I think this, you know, one of the things, you know, we talked about is, we beneficially probably know, saying, hey, you know, these things we buy every year, like chemicals we buy, man, I'll have a blast at. For people to understand, hey, inflation's gone up 3% this year, it's gone down 2% this year. Just to understand, you know, sometimes it's going to go up, and sometimes we have it going down. So just kind of having that information could be helpful to, to many persons, but also the public would be interested, so. If you, um, just, you can do a little more research to find out where some of these were compared to prior to the year, then I can announce that, that council meeting, actually.
Sure, sure.
Uh, any other questions?
I'm going to let those go first, correct? You, just, more information, the better.
Yeah, I like to add that.
Yep.
And just tells us the direction, where directions, if you want to move on.
I'm a fan of numbers, so it's not a problem.
Other questions? Come on. On, stand motion.
Two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Next, we have ordinance amending, uh, Chapter 165, the addition of new greens fees categories.
This is just a call for public hearing?
Yes, this is a call for public hearing.
The only thing I want to do on this is to add veterans rate. Last time we did this, we didn't, designated veterans rate. Action.
I don't, it's an, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, oh.
Right. Well, yeah.
Oh.
That was the last legislation.
That's a whole trip.
That was the last legislation that was done. And what the proposal was, is that we put it in, probably at the senior rate, but again, council will look at that, so that, uh, it's an issue that, uh, we just got overlooked the last time we did the public hearing, we'd set these. And so it's going to act and be a collect for this season. This document is more like what you were looking for, but I did not want to put it in there for avoid confusion, because I just wanted to kind of speak on it. This was something that was, it's kind of to fill some holes right now in our current pricing structure. As you see our Gulf rates here, uh, like the mayor said, we're not looking to increase anything, however, I became aware of some holes through some staff and through some members of the city, some residents, about, uh, like we talked about, uh, veterans aren't recognized. However, we also have a senior rate, as you see on here, senior Friday, Saturday, senior weekday, and senior nine holes. However, we do not have a non-resident senior. Non-residents are coming in, they're saying, well, I see that there's a senior here, it says $18, but that's a resident rate. Clearly, if you look at the, at the structure, it's significantly less than a resident rate. So that was one of the holes that was found, too, to, to fill that in. Also, there was another hole of non-resident weekend for nine holes. Uh, I can't remember what those were. Yeah, this is a discrepancy, but they're, they're mostly just the seniors and the veterans, just kind of filling a couple holes, so we can, you know, so we can kind of just have a, an even ground here.
Yes, it is.
I guess, my initial thought would be, you know, we're giving breaks to residents of the city, and so I don't know if we want to be giving breaks to non-residents.
Kind of the, we're just setting a rate for them, just so that they know, as Chris said, you need to communicate, oh, by the way, I'm a senior. They're, they're not being asked, are you a resident or a non-resident?
Okay.
So they're just kind of, because I thought that at first, too, but...
Okay, yeah. I mean, you want to have breaks for residents, but I don't think we're, you know, breaks for non-residents.
No, it just, it really just clarifies it more.
Okay.
You're a senior resident, you're going to get this break. Yeah.
Should we add the proposal?
Yeah, well, we have that. Do we, do we have that? I mean, you said you didn't give people, but we do not, but...
We do not, you do not, it was just something that was submitted to me by, uh, by that mayor.
I'll make it. I'll make it. This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing, right. That was the, that was the reason.
It'll be there for that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The last item, I'd like to discuss the executive session, we still got the course that's still a few, a few.
Anything else to come before, also recognition?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Uh, no, I, maybe, should we reset? Pull up next to the session.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor? We reset.
Call order claims. We're going to discuss an executive session, five, six, and seven, the finance, seven, the health, and one, the claims.
Correct.
Correct.
[music]